Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's 7:00 PM and time to begin our planning commission for this month. Our first item is the invocation which will be given by Commissioner Hatley and followed by the flag salute led by Commissioner Baker. Would you please stand?
Please stand your hands. Lord, we come before you tonight with open hearts, open minds to do what's best for the city of UConn. Please keep our firefighters safe and sound. And would you please keep all our police officers and this great nation of ours safe and sound? Because I need a little extra help lately. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the business of liberty and justice for all.
Call roll, please.
Chairman Taylor.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hatley.
Here.
Commissioner Baker.
Here.
Our first item is approval of the minutes of the June 13th, 2016 meeting. Is there any corrections or additions or do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve. Second?
A motion and second to approve the minutes as presented. Any discussion, comments? Call roll, please.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Hatley.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Chairman Taylor.
Yes. Item two is the visitor's section. It's nice to see a nice crowd tonight. If there's anyone here that would like to address the commission about a non-agended item, would you please step forward to the microphone at this time? Seeing none, we will proceed. Item three is to hear a request by John Nail, John Nail Construction, on behalf of the Cross and Family Trust for a curb cut. City of Yukon Code of Ordinance 406.5C. Driveways used for ingress and egress shall be confined to and shall not exceed 25 feet in width, exceeding width by approximately 53 feet for a total driveway width of 78 feet. Address being 15301 West Highway 66, approximately 898 feet west of North Cimarron Road and Highway 66. Mr. Nail.
We had our engineers crafted in total, put that together, and we submitted it to Mitchell Ward and had him look it over. And that's what we're requesting. It's going to be a real beautiful 40 acres, four homes located on that, and it's going to be landscaped with three ponds and turn it into a really beautiful place.
So is the driveway, the width is what you're asking for? How long is the driveway going to be?
Well, it's, it goes back through the property there.
So it'll be an extended driveway?
Yes, yes, sir. Be a concrete driveway.
And it will be that width all the way through?
No, it will not be that width all the way through. I don't have that piece of paper with me. Mitchell, do you remember how wide we are, I submitted that?
The actual driveway, if I remember right, it's about 24 feet wide after it gets to the, past the radiuses.
Okay.
And what's really great about it, too, is it's going to be concrete with curbs, and so it's going to be done right.
Okay.
It's going to be an asset to Yukon.
Yeah, you usually do things correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Any of the commissioners have a question for Mr. Nail? Someone care to read the item?
I'll go read it.
Okay.
In the case of the request by John Nail to construct a driveway or curb cut at 15301 West Highway 66, we have read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with the staff findings, including all plans and attachments cited in the staff reports. I move that this item be approved.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve item three as presented. Any discussion, comments? Call the roll, please.
Chairman Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Commissioner Hatley.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Thank you, John.
Thank you for your time.
Item four has been withdrawn from consideration for tonight, so we will move on to item five. To hear a request by Cedar Creek Consulting, Inc., on behalf of the Mannish Patel KP Holdings LP Web Land Holdings LLC for a final plat. And we have the, the track of land lying in the southwest quarter of Section 29 Township 12 North Range 5 West of the Indian Meridian. And the address on that totally is 1609 West End Point Drive, Yukon, Oklahoma. Satisfactory, Mr. Attorney?
It is. Thank you, sir.
Is there one, someone here on this final plat?
Hello, I'm Andrew Wilson. I'm here to represent the engineer of Cedar Creek.
Give your address, please.
My address is 1408 Shalamar Road in Edmond, Oklahoma.
Okay, can tell us, we've already done the preliminary plat, this is the final for that medical building?
For the West End Point. Essentially, it's, one last piece of that area is left to be platted. It's plating it for room for a hotel.
Oh, the hotel, yes, I'm sorry.
And room for a fast food, and then just whatever's left over is the third lot.
Is the third going to be a car wash or something down there, or is that still?
I haven't heard anything about a car wash.
Okay.
Any changes since the preliminary plat?
No, sir. It's pretty much straight up the same thing.
Any other questions?
No, there's no changes.
Okay, I'll accept a motion on that.
I'll read it. In the case of the application for a final plat for Cedar Creek Consulting, Inc., we have read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with the staff recommendations cited in the staff report. I move that this item be recommended for approval to the city council with the following conditions. Applicant must add an O'ar arrow to the plat before being heard by the city council.
I'll second. Motion and a second. Is there any discussion or comments? Call the roll, please.
Chairman Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Commissioner Hatley.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. We look forward to having you here.
Thank you.
Item six is to hear a request by John Libby, Route 66, surveying for a preliminary plat being a tract of land in the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter of the northeast quarter of all Lot 1 and 2, West End Point, Section 2 addition and addition to the city of Yukon. The address on this is actually 1551 Garth Brooks Boulevard. Yes, sir. State your name and address, please.
John Libby. I live at 2429 South Irvington Avenue in Tulsa.
Tell us about what you're doing here, sir.
This was the old Hensley Top Shelf Restaurant, which is now closed, and it's going to be developed into two lots. One is a Panda Express, and the other portion will also be a restaurant about the same size. That's yet to be determined.
So you're going to tear the building down and create two lots out of that one?
Yes, sir.
Mitchell, is staff satisfied with all of this?
Yes, staff is satisfied. If you'll notice, there's a cross-access agreement that's already on that. It's delineated. The easements are there, water is sure, so.
So Starbucks will still be able to get people back to their places?
Yes, Starbucks will still have ingress and egress to the side.
No, that's important to some people. Mainly them.
Especially Starbucks.
Yeah, mainly them.
So the width of the curb cut, everything's the same?
It will all stay the same, is my understanding.
Yes, there's no plan change to the curb cut.
Okay.
Is there any more landscaping going in around that area at all?
The landscaping will be required around the building. There's a certain number of trees that would be required for the parking spaces, but we haven't got the site reviewed yet, so off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you what those requirements would be.
So he'll be coming back with their first?
No, they have not submitted. We won't see them again, other than the final plat.
Final plat?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I'll accept a motion if there's no other questions.
I'll read it. In the case of the application for a preliminary plat for Banister Engineering LLC, we have read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with the staff recommendations cited in the staff report. I move that this item be recommended for approval to the city council with the following conditions. Applicant must add a note to the preliminary plat showing West End Point, Section 1, to the south of the proposed plat prior to final plat being accepted by the planning commission. Applicant must resubmit preliminary plat showing topographic contours on two-foot intervals.
Are you satisfied with these requirements, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this as presented. Is there any questions or comments? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Hatley.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Chairman Taylor.
Yes. Thank you, sir. Item seven, to hear a request by Grubbs Consulting LLC on behalf of Salazar Homes, Inc., for a preliminary plat, a part of the southwest quarter of Section 16 Township 12 North Range 5 West of the Indian Meridian, Canadian County, and it contains 3.27 acres. And I don't see a street address on here. This is north of Main Street and south of the soccer field, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Mr. Attorney, is that, do you want me to read all of that, or is that well?
That's pretty good. Let's go ahead and read it.
Particularly described as follows. Beginning at a point on the west line of southwest quarter, distance of 1580.99 feet north of the southwest corner of said southwest quarter, thence continuing north, zero degrees and 15 minutes, is that correct? East on the west line of southwest quarter for a distance of 460.66 feet, then thence north, 89 degrees, 59 minutes and 25 seconds?
Correct.
Correct? East for a distance of 310 feet, then thence south, zero degrees, zero minutes and 15 seconds. West for a distance of 460.66 feet, then south, 89 degrees, 59 minutes and 25 seconds. West for a distance of 310 feet to the point or place of beginning containing 3.27 acres, more or less. Now everybody understands exactly where we're at, don't you?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. I'm here today on behalf of the applicant. I also have my civil engineer with me, Mr. Mark Grubbs. This is going to be a site that the commission remembers. There was a previous PUD application on this site for a multifamily project. That submittal has been withdrawn and was before the commission. Now, this evening is nothing more than a preliminary plat on a portion of the property that is already zoned R3. As your staff report notes, what we seek to do here today is permitted by right with the density, with the height, and all the other items that we seek today. The size of the lot is about 3.28 acres. There were several commitments made through that PUD process. The staff has asked that those portions of the commitments that we made in that process still be adhered to. We are in agreement with those. Your staff does recommend approval with the conditions, and we do agree with the conditions. I think it's important to focus on what we have here. We have three buildings, a total of 24 units. All buildings will be one-story with pitch roofs. Here's a rendering of what you'll see. They're all brick. They look like just a large ranch-style home almost, now that they're all single-story. There's one access point. When you consider a zoning case and a plat, I think it's important to note the two differences. A plat is a very different approach than what you do when you sit in the capacity of hearing a zoning case. When you hear a zoning case, there's many more things at issue, comprehensive plan, traffic, all of those things. When we think of a plat, what's at issue is, do we conform to the regulations that the city of Yukon requires? Here we do. Your professional staff is very clear in their staff report, and that's why they recommended approval. There are subdivision regulations that control this submittal of the plat and control the development pursuant to that plat, all of which will be complied with. It's a very different discussion, like I said, than zoning. The plat is more of a check-the-boxes approach, and if you check the box, then you should be permitted to develop pursuant to that plat, and that plat should be approved. I would like Mr. Grubbs to address the drainage issue. We did have a meeting with the neighbors last week. One of the concerns that was brought up was drainage. He will be able to explain it much better than I will, but rest assured, all of the regulations and ordinances concerning drainage, drainage will be met and complied with pursuant to this plat. So I would be happy to answer any questions, and if there are no questions, it may at this time, I would like to turn it over to Mr. Grubbs.
I've got pretty good eyes, but not that good. Go ahead, Mr. Grubbs.
Mark Grubbs, 1819 South Morgan Road. As David stated, we're the civil engineer on the project. The, one of the requirements of the submittal process is that we submit, at the final plat stage, we submit a no-rise certificate, which will, basically that will have to prove that there is no adverse effect in the rise of the water, so we won't make it any worse than the existing drainage conditions are. I spoke with your city engineer today, prior to this meeting. We did do a preliminary no-rise certificate on this, and your city engineer was satisfied with that for the preliminary plat, for the PUD submittal, and that carried into this preliminary plat submittal. So the city is also requesting that we pay a fee in lieu of detention for this project as not to hold the water back, but to let it release and go on through. I'll be happy to go in to answer any questions, if you have any. But we will have to meet the city drainage ordinance, the city engineer will have to approve our drainage study at the final plat stage. And it would meet the city drainage ordinance.
I'll get to you, sir. Everybody will have an opportunity. Any questions for this gentleman? Mitchell, all of these conditions that we have before us here, as I understood, the gentleman said they agreed to what was on the PUD.
That's my understanding. They agreed to do what we asked for when we was working on the PUD.
So can we get that in writing?
I think that's going to be, if they agree upon it, and you make a motion and put those in the motion, I think, that's pretty well, understanding. They'd have to actually add those notes to the plat.
They're listed. They're listed in your staff report.
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioners?
I see more than half that's still in the hundred-year floodplain. Has it been addressed by the Corps?
At the final plat stage, we submit to the Corps of Engineers to apply for a permit, but what we do, all, basically this is going to be compensatory storage. You dig out of the floodplain and use that excavation to fill your pad above the floodplain so that you cause no adverse effect.
Well, I was out towed by this weekend with just a little bit of rain we had, and that ground was holding water out there to the north.
I've seen, I've seen pictures, yes, sir. The, the one thing I would like to mention that in the staff report, it mentions that we do site-proof screening along the south side. The neighbor to the south has mentioned that there is drainage that comes on to us through the common area within the preliminary plat, right in here. We would not want to obstruct the flow with a site-proof fence in that area, so we would do it everywhere we can, but not to obstruct flow.
So what are you going to do to do site screening for that backside of the property?
Along the south side, we would do as much site screening.
Oh, I'm sorry, south side, okay. I was thinking more of the east side.
We're only agreeing to what's in the preliminary plat.
So there was a determination that a detention pond would be detrimental?
Detrimental.
That's what, Mitchell, that we looked like, I'd read it that end, and you guys said that would be a bad thing.
The city engineer reviewed that. Typically, what happens, and we may want Mr. Grubbs to expand on it since he's into drainage, and that's his specific knowledge, is basically you want that water out there as quick as you can. You don't want to hold it and retain it because it adds to any additional water that would be added to it. Mr. Grubbs can expand on that for you.
So what a detention pond does is it stores water to release at a slower rate, at historic rate. And if we hold back that water, it allows the, the upper drainage basin time to catch up with that water and would increase the elevation and the discharge at that point. So what we want to do is get that water out of there as quick as possible so that we're not waiting for the rest of the water from the upstream from the basin to come down.
Will this property be tilted or landscaped or tilted to the, to the east so that the water runs down that way?
It would grade to the east.
Grade to the east? Other questions from the commissioners?
Gentlemen, I have.
Thank you.
All right, before I open this up to comments or questions from the folks, I didn't know if y'all had met together and had one spokesman that would like to speak for everybody or do, or not. Yes or no?
No.
No. Okay. Who would like to go first? Yes, sir. As y'all come up, would you always say your name and your address, please, and speak right into the microphone?
I'm David McDonald, 700 North Piedmont Road, directly across the street from where they're going to build. I moved to Yukon 10, 11 years ago. Sold a nice house I had in Bethany because they built apartments across the street from me. I was going to take care of them. They never did. They sold them. They turned into Section 8 and turned into trash. I lost over $70,000 on appraisal on my property. Now we're going to do the same thing again when I got away from them. Secondly, what are they going to do about traffic in and out? Where's it going to go? How are they going to get in and out? Are they going to come out on Piedmont Road?
Yes, sir.
Directly across the street from my house.
Mitchell, is there two or one?
One drive on this application.
One, okay.
Where's it at? On the north side or the south side?
Can you answer that, Mr. Grubbs, or?
Is it the south side? Some, south side? Right in front of my house. Can I do a short demonstration? It won't affect anybody or anything, just prove a point. Very simple.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if that would be appropriate. I'd ask what he's going to do first because I don't know what he's pulling out of his pocket.
As I'm sitting there trying to read, watch TV, or go to bed, sleep, I'm going to have this all in my mouth.
Well, I understand your point.
You understand my point?
Yes, sir.
This has been a situation I lived with before. That's why I moved out here. That's why I bought where I bought. I was told there would never be anything built around me because there was flood zone, federal. Matter of fact, I've had to fight with FEMA because they put me in flood zone. Had to prove to them I wasn't. Now they're going to come in there and build up, add more water to it, more traffic, and shine right in my light. The Salazar are going to compensate me for the loss of value of my property? Or they're going to compensate me for not getting any sleep at night because cars coming in and out of there and lights shining through? You know, that's something that y'all need to think about. I lived there. And that's why I got away from them, so I could be, have some peace and quiet.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, someone else?
Jeff Bratcher, 500 Oak Creek Drive. He's going to slant this to the east, is that my understanding?
That's what he said.
I back up to this, as you know, you're aware of the flooding. The creek's not, the drainage is not getting any better, so I'm getting it from both, I'm going to get it from the front and the back if this is approved. And if he slants that to the east, that water's going to override that creek. I was up there picking out trash behind, right in my backyard from the actual creek water flooding here recently. So if he builds this up and slants it to the east, all these permanent residents, not just temporary housing, but permanent residents will be affected. So I just want to make it known that, you know, I'm totally against this, and, you know, they can do it. I'm just against it.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
My name is Dwight Langstrat, and I live at 305 North Piedmont Road. My concern is this. I done a little measurement the other day. 310 feet back in is 100 feet into the floodplain. Now, the lowest point between Turtle Creek and my plate, or Highway 4 there, is just about 230 feet from the highway east. It is two foot lower there than at any point on across to Turtle Creek. Now, they're trying to tell me that they're going to get this water to flow east. It don't flow east. It'll flow west. It flows northwest. When that creek overfloods back there, it'll flood and it comes northeast. And they're going to have to fill, there'll be about an acre, about one and a quarter acre of this they're going to have to fill in. Now, where's all this dirt coming from? They're saying it's coming out of this floodplain. Okay, when this fills up, you're back to square one. That water is going to build up further than ever. It's got to. There's no other way. Because as long as you haven't got a place for it to get out at, it's going to have to build up because you filled in another acre and a half. So, how in the world, they think an engineer can change the flow of water? You don't need a piece of paper to tell you that water flows downhill and seeps as slow as that one, right?
It does, for a fact.
So anyway, what that's going to affect me, now between my property and their property, there's a, when the water gets up to about three foot deep right there, now on to the east of that, it'll run about a foot and a half to foot on across to the, to the creek. Now, how are they going to take and divert that water back to the east when that water's coming from, from the east when it floods? It don't make sense. It's got to go somewhere.
Yes, sir.
So it's going to raise it. No way out of it. That's my point.
Thank you.
My name is Steve Furtle, and I live at 302 Ellison Street, and I back up on the east side of the creek. If I may pass this to the board, please. Looking at gentleman, his picture taken out of my backyard, looking across Mr. Langstrat's property to the northwest, towards Piedmont Road, towards the north end of the property which he wants to raise. They talked about a no-rise stipulation in their plat or whatever, that the water would never get any higher than the existing flood zone, or as it is now. Does that take into consideration all the building that's going on south and all that water that's going to be headed this way? Mr. Commissioner, by yourself, you said you're out there last weekend. We got a three-hour rain, and that thing was already out of its banks. Now they want to build a dam across the end of that, basically by raising that property. Once that depression... Once that depression fills up, that water's still gonna come up. Once you hit a level, it's still gonna cut up. I don't care where you move that dirt to. If you raise it up, you're gonna create a, a coffered dam. I'm on the east side and I've had water up to and inside my fence. I don't want anymore. Thank you.
My name is James Choak. I live at four oh three Oak Creek. Again, I'm gonna ask the commissioners here to, uh, consider asking for an extensive study of, uh, flooding upstream, downstream on this property, the long-term effects it's gonna have on the current residents in Ranchwood addition. And I'd also ask that you take into consideration the plot of land that sits on the main and Piedmont Road where that road plant was put in temporarily. What's gonna happen when that is developed? Because if I understand the map right, that's currently zone C three, which is commercial. So if anybody goes in there, you're gonna have a lot more area that's gonna cause water to dump off into that creek. So I don't think it's asking too much that any study be done on the long-term effects of both of these properties, what it's gonna do to the residents in North Ranchwood. Or the people that live right across the street from it or right next door to it.
Mitchell, uh, Mitchell, what has been done by our city engineers? That brings up a good point about water study.
Uh, he's, uh, the applicant, uh, Mr. Grubbs, has provided, uh, a preliminary drainage report for the city engineer, from my understanding. The city engineer's reviewed that preliminary report. And I, I think they've come to some agreement of what's gonna be required for the full submit to FEMA as well.
So, uh, at some point FEMA will have to sign off on this.
That's what he's talking about, the certificate of no rise.
And the Corps will have to sign off before they can get approval to build.
That's correct.
Do you have something else, sir?
In terms of drainage, um, what will happen next is before a final plat, a, a very detailed, full-blown drainage study will have to be performed. That'll be turned in to the city. The city, city engineer will, uh, have the opportunity to review and comment on and accept prior, you know, to any development. Um, I do wanna point out, because it was, uh, brought up on the traffic issue, we did submit a traffic study to the city. Comment, or excuse me, finding number thirteen within your staff report, the city engineer did accept that traffic study. And, and Andre and just Mr. Grubbs explained, you know, the reason that we're, we're not detaining the water was because at the request of the city engineer, uh, this is a better scenario. And so all a developer can do is handle the water on their site. Um, all they can do is comply with the rules and regulations as they exist for development within any city. All of those rules and regulations will be complied with, have been complied with. And the city engineer will ensure at the time of development and building that everything is done to the letter of the law. Uh, and so when you have a development that meets all those conditions and it's not a zoning case, uh, we believe it, it should be approved. And it, it is a, uh, more of a ministerial act than one of discretion like you have in a zoning case.
Mr. Walker, do you have something you want to say, sir?
Ted Walker, three oh five Ellison. Listen, two weeks ago, I was going up to north on Piedmont Road. We had one point ten, one and a tenth inch rain. A drainage ditch right in front of the soccer field, all the way past the right property was completely full. Now, when I drive down and get on Tenth Street and look at that eighty or acres, I see what they're putting in there for drainage. Well, if you've got eighty acres of concrete or asphalt draining into there, heaven help us. Now, what happens to the people that live? I live at three oh five Ellison. What happens to us? Do we have to get flood insurance because Mr. Salazar wants us to defer that water toward us? I think not. And I ask you for the rest of these people here that have property there to deny this. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Heather Bratcher. I live at five hundred Oak Creek Drive. I was just listening to the gentleman speak a few minutes ago and it, it's concerning me and I believe it's concerning to other residents that they only can, are considering what's required within the law of them and not thinking about other residents that are gonna be affected around them. I would like to ask that this not be approved because until a water study is done in all directions to prove that the water flow is not gonna adversely affect the residents that are currently there and that have been there and plan to stay there before anything goes forward or any planning. I'd just like to have that done before they proceed with anything else.
Hey, is there anyone else?
I, I also, I'm sorry. I just, I, I have several photos looking out my window into the backyard where the water is coming into our backyard from the field that they're talking about elevating the water also, if you care to look at that.
Do I need my name again?
Go ahead, sir.
Anyhow, they say that this has been presented to the, uh, city engineer. I'd like to be able to talk to that city engineer. I'd like to know what's been presented to him.
Right, you can certainly get his number, Mitchell.
I'd like to see all of us here be able to talk to that city engineer because I don't think of everything. Does he know that that water flows back to the west instead of to the east when it overfloods? How well does he know all this? Does he know that there's water coming across highway four from, from Ash, across the highway to run an inch deep when we get a heavy rain? Does he know that? I doubt it. You gotta take these things all into consideration. And if it's not into consideration, it's gonna raise that flood plain. There's no way out of it. So therefore it should be denied.
Dale Kason, three oh nine Ellison Street. I live right at the corner of, uh, Mark and Ellison. And over the last few years, I've lived there eight years, I think. Uh, over the last few years, especially, I think, two to three years, I've witnessed several times neighbors' trashcans flowing down both Ellison and Mark heading west towards that field. And I wish I had the video on my phone right now. I don't. But my biggest primary concern, now I get engineers get paid a lot of money to figure all this stuff out. But during the construction, when they're moving all this dirt around in the flood plain, what happens when we get one of these one hundred or five hundred year floods temporarily blocks drainage and now it backs up big time, right during that storm? So, I mean, there's all kinds of considerations. But if you're gonna grade to the east, what's the current grade of the land right now? Do you know? Okay, so do you know what you're gonna grade it? Do you know what you're grading to compared to what it is right now? Do you think it'd be a steeper grade?
Mr. Chairman, it might be easier if we go to the mic so we can actually.
Oh, sorry.
I was just curious what the current grade is versus what you're gonna, you know, put it up at.
We haven't, to, to answer your questions, um, we haven't looked at all the final grading at this time. We're in a preliminary plat stage, asking for the approval of a preliminary plat. The next phase to this process is the final plat stage, which we do all of our grading, all of our drainage analysis and everything in the detail, then that comes back before, um, the planning commission and city council as well. So, uh, we know more detailed information and if we can't meet all the conditions of, um, the city requirements at that time, then your final plat would not be moved, would not be approved. So I, I really, I can't answer those detailed questions at this time.
Okay, um, that's fine. I mean, I get that, but maybe we should get more studies done before we go any further. Like I said, I've been around construction sites over the years. I've worked my father-in-law residential construction framing and stuff. And I've been in a lot of subdivisions that have the barriers for all the drainage and all the soil coming down. You get a massive rain, all that's in the storm, I mean, in the, uh, drainage. And it backs up on streets and I've seen pretty good inclines where the water backs up big time where it really shouldn't have been. So, I mean, you start moving around a bunch of dirt in a flood plain and you get a big storm, you might have some issues. Even if it's temporarily, I don't want my house flooded, so.
Bob Bradway, five twenty-one Mark Avenue, Yukon. One thing I'd like to point out on highway four and any time that it rains, doesn't have to be a great rain, small rain, but it is just normal procedure for the Yukon Police Department to go out and close highway four to keep people from running into the water and, uh, causing damage to the vehicles. That's just a routine item. It's probably in the policy manual. When it rains so much, you go out and close the highway. We're still dealing with that today. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Robin Reinhardt, seven hundred.
Pull that down where you can speak.
Robin Reinhardt, seven hundred North Piedmont Road, directly across. My question is on the last time we met, um, it was gonna be, there were gonna be a total of ninety-one units. And now we're talking single dwelling units? Is that what I'm understanding?
That's correct.
Single, single.
Single story.
Single story. So how many units are we talking?
Three buildings, twenty-four apartments, according to.
Okay, so we're still talking apartments?
Yes.
Okay. So, I've been in apartment management. So what happens five, ten years down the road, if this is all approved and he decides to sell and this property decreases and it goes down and it becomes low income? I've been there, done it. See what comes in. You know.
There's, there's, there's no way we can answer that question.
That's right, but I live directly across the street. So, you know, there again, as my dad stated, you're decreasing the value of our property, you're decreasing the value of the property that's just to the south of it, along with decreasing the value of some of the property in Ranchwood. We have, already have how many apartment communities right there? They just built a new apartment community down by Kilpatrick Turnpike. Why, why does Yukon need another one? I've lived here for thirty-plus years. Why do we need another one? And the new plat shows that they're going further north into that soccer field parking lot.
No, they're, they're not extending.
Okay. The new, what, the new plat that we should, we got shows that they're extending that to the north. All the way to the substation.
I think what they're talking about is the zoning. The zoning has always been in place and that's what they're seeing all the way to the substation. The track that the applicant owns is what's in the blue or the red that he's got.
This is the substation up here at the top, so you're gonna go all the way to the substation? So as of this, as of yesterday, when I was out there doing some yard work and mowing, there's still water standing down there.
Right.
From last week's rain. And they're gonna, I mean, and you, if you drive down sixty-six right at Piedmont Road and you look down there in that, in Turtle Creek where it drains, look at all that you, drive over there, look down there. I meant to take a picture and bring it, look down there and see what's down there. So you are gonna build this water up by doing the grade, you're gonna build the water up, more trash. That's not kept cleaned out at all. So it's just gonna keep flowing and it's just gonna keep flooding. There has been numerous times, I have to pull out my driver's license to get past the barricade just to get two blocks to my house. And so you're gonna have twenty-four more building, or three buildings with twenty-four apartments. Say two cars per apartment, so you're putting forty-eight more cars to have to try to get through a barricade when we're already fighting it. They won't let us through if we don't have our driver's license. So we're just looking at what, more traffic backup?
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna cut this off right after Ted. Go ahead, Ted.
I just have one more question, Larry. What is the, uh, what is the plans for widening highway four in that same vicinity that they were wanting to build these apartments?
At some point, as, uh, the former mayor can tell you, it is on the to be built, but I don't know what year, I don't know if within my lifetime, but it's supposed to be widened at some point.
Well, uh, it's my information that's supposed to come up at twenty nineteen, was supposed to come back into play. Now, my question is, which side of highway four are they gonna take the dirt to widen it? If you put those apartments where they wanting to, something's gotta give. Thank you.
One more thing, yes.
On that, we're actually donating the right of way necessary for those street widening projects as part of this application.
Okay, uh, folks, we understand. And these are all good points that's being brought up. This is a preliminary plat on a piece of ground that is already zoned. It was zoned in nineteen seventy-two. This gentleman owns this piece of ground, whether I like it or where any of these people up here like it or not. We're here to uphold the law of what Yukon Code of Ordinances tells us to do. And these people are within their rights to build that property as long as they stay in that boundary. And they're gonna have a magnifying glass put on them by the city. Mitchell has, we've talked about this extensively. I've talked about this with the city manager. We understand that that is a terrible piece of ground. But as far as this application for a preliminary plat and this extra investigation and, uh, all of the, uh, planning and, uh, inspections that'll have to be done before a preliminary done is brought back to us, you'll be notified when there's, uh, when the final is brought back. And up until then, nothing's being built. It's just a preliminary plat with them doing investigations. I'm sorry. I mean, that is the law and that's what we're up here to do. We have to abide. Mr. Attorney, am I correct on what I'm saying here?
You have to abide by the law, correct.
Is there a further discussion among the commissioners?
So, uh, well, one of my questions, what, this has been zoned R three since seventy-two?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I don't know who in the world and what right mind they were in zoning it back then for R three. You have, you have a question, sir?
Uh, just a dumb question. If, if that plot that they are gonna build on, if they're gonna build on that piece, how far beyond that piece can they work with to, uh, build up? Or whatever, in other words, are they going to slope up to that? Are they gonna build a wall at that and try to keep it at the same level?
I don't know, but we will see when they submit a final plat and it has to go through the city engineer and the city planner before it can get to us.
Okay. And, you know, if, if they dig down behind that and pull that land out, all that is going to silt right back in the next rain or it's gonna be a big pond. So you haven't gained anything. Anyway.
Mr. Chairman, we need his name and address, please.
Your name and address, sir?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Jerry Hanson's, two hundred North Ranchwood Boulevard. Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you. Any of the commissioners have anything further?
Sir, you, you mentioned you didn't know who, how that got zoned that way?
Come up to the mic, please.
You made, you said you don't know how it got zoned that way? It was zoned that way by the Landmark Baptist Church. They intended to build a church there at that.
Really?
That's when it was zoned. It was zoned for a church, not for a bunch of apartments.
Wish they had of.
And I rather doubt that they planned on moving all that dirt in there like you, like they're planning on doing.
Okay, okay. All right, I will accept the motion if there's no other, uh, questions. All right, I will accept the motion if there's no other questions.
All right. In the case of the application for a preliminary plat submitted by Grubbs Consulting LLC on behalf of Salazar Homes, Inc., I have read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with all plans and attachments cited in the staff report dated April 6, 2016. I move that this item be recommended for approval with the following additional conditions. Applicant must submit a corrected, scaled preliminary plat prior to acceptance of a final plat application that includes the following items. Location, layout, type, and proposed size of water, sewer, and drainage facilities. A 10-foot landscape buffer be imposed along the south property line with evergreen trees at 40-foot centers, as was imposed on the previous preliminary plat application. A 6-foot to 8-foot sight-proof fence or wall along the south property line. A 6-foot to 8-foot sight-proof fence or wall along the north property line with a 5-foot landscape buffer with evergreen trees at 40-foot centers. Street trees planted 30 feet on center along the west side of the property. 2-foot contours clear enough for reproduction. That's the topography there. All notes requested in number 3 of this report. Mark, do I need to read all those? Give me two.
Nope.
Okay, all right.
Nope. But when you come back, you cited the staff report. It says April the 6th. It's actually July 11th.
I'll, when I come back, I'll say that again. Applicant must comply with all requirements noted in number 4 of this report. Applicant must also submit the following items prior to acceptance of a final plat application. A description of the improvements such as grading, paving, tree planting, walks, and installation of utilities, which his subdivider proposes to make, and the time when they are proposed to be made. A new no-rise certification study will need to be submitted as a portion of the proposed current development plan is within the floodplain. A fee in lieu of an attention pond. And now I'm going to go back and make an amendment. We find ourselves in agreement with all plans and attachments cited in the staff report dated, and this is my amendment, July 11th? 2016.
We have a second on this?
Second.
I have one question. Mitchell, in, in all of this, it says nothing about the east side of the property in sight screening or anything else. What, what is set to be designed for the east side?
It's not listed in here, but it was listed in the April 6th staff report.
Well, if it's not, if there, we've got to have something in here. Plus, we need something stating that the, everything in the preliminary plat, or is that in this item 3? It's re-listed. I want to know what's going to be on the east side of the property.
Water.
Water. Lot of water.
Lot of...
Oh. The complete east, they decide not to disturb anything. If you're talking about completely to the east property line of the property, but the zoned area is what he's asking for, right?
Correct.
There is a zone, or you're doing anything on the east side is what he's asking along that berm.
Well, gentlemen, it seems like to me there should be some type of, something on the east side, not necessarily a fence, which would, I don't want anything to interfere with water, but I don't know, trees, I don't know.
We're willing to do trees every 40 feet on that eastern side of the plat.
Of the plat?
Of the plat, I'd like.
Okay. That does not go down into the floodplain, ladies and gentlemen. If you want to look at his deal over there, yeah.
How about parking, Larry? It was not even brought up.
Yeah, it's, it's in the preliminary plat here. Mitchell has made sure there's enough parking for the 24 apartments.
One more. Is that 24 total or 24 per unit?
No, total. Three buildings of, of...
Eight apartments, first building?
Yes.
No, there's 24 apartments.
Total of 24 apartments total on the grounds. So each building would have eight.
Mark, do you need me to add a fourth condition? That Mr. Boxer, Mr. Box said that he would add, okay. I had a, he wants to do it in a second, I guess. We're going to have a minute, is that fine?
Yeah.
Bill, he wants to amend, amend his motion here.
I amend the motion for an additional condition, that there will be a landscape buffer along the east side with evergreen trees at 40-foot centers.
You on a second, Ted, Bill?
Is that right, Mr. Box?
Yes. Okay. A second.
All right. I don't know if that, we're trying, ladies and gentlemen. We don't want, I don't want anything to hurt your property, you understand? I don't want things to hurt your property. We're trying to watch it. We're going to, this staff will watch it very, very closely to make sure they do not deviate to the east. And the other very good questions brought up about Highway 4 and all of that, that's going to have to be addressed as UConn grows. Mr. Chair. The former mayor has worked hard on trying to get Highway 4 back on the, the letting, and I didn't know that was due to be in 2019. It can't come too soon. Of 14, but it didn't happen.
Mr. Chair, we have, we have a motion in a second.
We have a motion in a second, I haven't voted.
Well, that's okay. I got, we're, we're in the discussion.
Okay.
Among ourselves. If, I would just, one suggestion, always looking for the low-hanging fruit. If, if you, since there's only one driveway, and Mr. McDonald only has one driveway in one house, if you could just take a look at it and, and see if there's any wiggle to move the driveway, because really all we're talking about is when cars, if they're coming in, it's not the issue, it's when they go out. 99% of the cars are going to go toward 66. So if there is any wiggle on the driveway to where it's not pointed at his front window when they come out, if that's possible, that's some goodwill. If it can, it can.
Call a row, please.
Chairman Taylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatley?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, we appreciate your, the way you handle yourself at these meetings. It's, it's not pleasurable, but at least we can visit with one another and understand what we're trying to do here. No one wants to hurt your properties. I don't, and I don't really feel like Mr. Salazar wants to hurt your properties. He made an investment in some, some land some time ago, and we would not let him do what he wanted to do the first time. This time, he's within his boundaries of the law. Yeah.
He can always put storage like he did before he is now. He can always build storage buildings there.
Well, he'd still have to come back, I think. Is there any further business? Please stand up to the microphone.
Okay, before anything, Heather Bratcher, 500 Oak Creek Drive, before anything's finalized or any construct, it is going to have to come before you guys again, and the final approval, that everything, the slants, that no one else is going to be adversely affected. That's all going to have to be approved?
Certificate, it'd also have to be approved by the Corps of Engineers.
Okay, all right.
And the city council.
And the city council will have to approve it.
Okay, and we'll all be notified before, of any plans? We would like to ask that everyone in the neighborhood be notified. There are just a small percentage that are receiving letters right now.
Well, the way that works is they have to, within 300 feet, is all they are required to do.
Mr. Chairman, on this, there was, actually, the only notice we were required to give was to adjointing property owners of the preliminary plat area only. It was decided by management that we notify everybody in the original notification area, and that's all that got notified.
So I would suggest, at the next meeting, that possibly y'all get together and pick one or two speakers and not have the same thing said over and over, and make sure everybody gets notified that wants to be notified.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Pass the word around.
Okay, is there further business to come before us tonight? Any new business? Staff, y'all have anything?
Nothing.
Our next meeting will be August the 8th. This meeting's...